No, thank you. All right, anybody wishing to participate in the Pledge of Allegiance may stand to do so now.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America, with the
Okay, I now call this City Council Regular Meeting and City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Screw Street on the second floor of Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505, Tuesday, June 17, 2025, at now 7:16 PM. And we are proud to broadcast live via YouTube at the city of Morgantown. If the clerk would be so kind as to take the roll.
Yes. Bill Kowicki?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Here.
Daniel Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Abugonum?
Present. First thing we have is our approval of minutes. Do I have any changes I need made? Good.
Do I have a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
All right, by acclamation?
Yep.
Good? All right. Today, we have several correspondence and proclamations. The first one that we have today, I'm going to read, and then Counselor Wees will get up for me, if that's okay? Whereas Don Nealon has dedicated his career to the advancement of football education and community spirit in Morgantown, West Virginia. And whereas the city of Morgantown would like to recognize all of his accomplishments in the city, at WVU, and the state of West Virginia, and in our community. And whereas his tenure as the head coach of the West Virginia University Mountaineers, in which he served the team faithfully for 21 years, spanning from 1980 to 2000, brought national recognition to the program, and fostered a culture of excellence, sportsmanship, and perseverance. And whereas Coach Nealon was inducted into the College Football Hall of Fame in 2005, exhibited a career coaching record of 202, 128 and 8, and was the 17th winningest coach in college football history. And whereas when Nealon arrived at WVU, he introduced the Mountaineers' first home and away uniforms and a new helmet logo, the Flying WV, which has become the official logo of West Virginia athletics, and eventually of the university itself. And whereas beyond the gridiron, Coach Nealon's influence extends into the community, serving as a champion of charitable causes such as the Haas Foundation, which has provided nearly $1 million in assistance to WVU Medicine Children's Hospital and families facing hardship. Stepping Stones, a nonprofit organization offering year-round recreational activities for children and adults with disabilities, and multiple other charities. And whereas since his retirement from coaching, Nealon has received the distinguished West Virginian Award from the West Virginia Broadcasters Association. And whereas his legacy of service, excellence, and generosity shall continue to inspire future generations, and his name will forever be synonymous with Mountaineer pride and community strength. And whereas his legacy continues to inspire future generations in Morgantown and beyond, ensuring that the values of hard work, integrity, and teamwork remain foundational in sports and in life. And now therefore I, Joe Abugonum, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend and celebrate Donald Nealon, and extend our gratitude for his service and dedication to the Morgantown community, and wish to celebrate his continuing contributions and legacy.
Yeah, sure.
Want to do a photo?
Sure.
I don't even know her, but this room looks...
Do you want us to come around?
Yeah.
We'll do it right here, Coach.
Yeah, just right.
What are you doing? Do you want me to hold that for you until you get situated? I'm Joe, by the way. Very pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
You want to hold this for you right here?
Hold it together.
That sounds great, if that's what you'd like. I'm gonna do my best.
Well, that's great.
Let's try to scan you a little bit.
I might need to borrow that.
He wants to look pretty in the picture.
And one, two, three, let's take a few, and then another one. One, two, three. Great.
If any family wants photos, you can also...
As a coach myself, I appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
Is there... Do you want to say anything, or are you okay?
I'm fine.
Make a sign.
You want me to do this?
All right. If it's all right with council, I'm gonna read up there the next two in a row. All right, I have the Juneteenth proclamation. Annie, are you...
I am.
You are? And our human rights... For those that don't know, this is our Human Rights Chair. Does any crowd need your word?
I look very much like a chair as well.
Whereas these United States of America emerged as a nation on July 4, 1776. With the inevitable, indelible words of the Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, and that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness," notwithstanding the existing practice of slavery. And whereas on September 22, 1862, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that as of January 1, 1863, "All persons then held as slaves and secessionist territories to be then and thence for forever free." It affected more than 3.5 million of the country's 4 million enslaved people, and declared that the U.S. executive branch in the military would recognize and protect this new freedom. And whereas on June 19, 1865, 24 days after the Civil War ended, and two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation enactment, a Union general posted an order in Galveston informing the people of Texas that all enslaved people are now free. This involves an absolute quality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor, thereby making the slaves held in Texas among the last to learn of their freedom. And whereas Jubilation Day was first celebrated on June 19, 1866, in Galveston, and grew to a widespread annual commemoration as Black Independence Day, or Juneteenth. And on June 17, 2021, President Joe Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, making Juneteenth a federal holiday. And whereas the city of Morgantown values its diversity and recognizes the great contributions of its more than 2,000 residents, who are descendants of slaves who continue to contribute to its cultural and community, and joins in the celebration of slavery's abolition in these United States of... A b... Yeah. Working towards our goal of liberty and justice for all. Now therefore I, Joseph Abugonum, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the City Council on this 17th day of June 2025, do hereby proclaim June 19 as the holiday Juneteenth. In the city of Morgantown, an urge all to reflect on the ongoing cause of freedom for the Black community, remembering that although the 1865 order in Texas called for absolute equality, that vision is not yet realized.
Oh, red.
Thank you.
Did I learn what I learned about this?
Sure.
Apologies, because I know you have a lot to do tonight, but I have to do my... What I learned while writing this proclamation thing. Juneteenth is appropriately celebrated, but there are a lot of misconceptions about it. And it's sad that it wasn't made holiday until 2021. But this was based originally on the Emancipation Proclamation, which Lincoln wrote in 1862, but enacted January 1 of 1863, so before West Virginia was a state. And the Emancipation Proclamation did not apply to the Northern Union states. It applied to the Confederate states. So his Union troops advanced, and they were to liberate slaves, because there's no way of enforcing it otherwise. He did it as a presidential proclamation, so he could use the War Powers Act. And that's why he couldn't apply it to Northern states, because he wasn't in war with the Union. So, West Virginia continued to hold states at that point, and it's like, you hold slaves at that point, as was not yet a state. But it got better. When we became a state, and somewhere along the way, Lincoln had worked hard to get the Northern states to eliminate slavery as well. This was the first time that war aimed for, civil war, was abolition, as opposed to preserving the Union. Was the proclamation for the Emancipation. And he sold it in two different ways to the people who weren't in favor of abolition. He said, "We need more people in our army, and so these slaves can join us, and they can fight with us." To the abolitionists, he sold it as, "This will add to the dignity of the newly freedmen, that they can fight for their own people, and will give them a sense of belonging." Great statement that he was. So, this was the... One of the few proclamations of its substance importance that has never been challenged and poured. Nobody brought suit against it, nobody said, "We can't do this." You just put it out there, and there you go. And then we get to Galveston, at the end of the Civil War, and there are still states. Ten of them are named in the Emancipation Proclamation, but there are fewer that continued to have slavery at that point. And General Rodent to Galveston, so that was the last stronghold of Confederates, the last place we were still holding out. It wasn't that they're unaware of the Emancipation Proclamation, they'd all heard of it, they just didn't care. And the general who posted the order was told to do so, and he did. And the original, the important part of it, the part we can be proud of, is right out in the proclamation that everybody's free. It was followed up with what many consider to be a basis for more ingrained racism in the U.S. The freedmen are advised to remain quietly at their present homes for work and wages. They're informed they will not be allowed to collect at military post, and they will not be supported in idleness in either there or elsewhere. So the general who posted this was not in favor of abolition or in support of slavery, or posting anybody, did follow his orders. So the end of slavery came about with the 13th Amendment, the 14th Amendment, and 15th Amendment. The 13th made it illegal to hold slaves, and this was also part of Reconstruction plans that states had to sign onto this. We cannot have legalized slavery. Slavery can only be used as a form of punishment for somebody who's committed a crime. Questions there, too? Fourteenth Amendment? Is the most litigated by far of all the amendments. Everybody seems on that equal protection, due process. We have a lot of that going on right now. Roe versus Wade was done on the 14th Amendment. And it was a procedural, due process case. And 15th Amendment, whose right to vote can't be abridged because of race or color or condition of previous servitude. So it's three. 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment, along with the Emancipation Proclamation, were what brought about the end of slavery. There is one other proclamation I thought about doing but didn't. It's for Loving Day, which is June 12th. And it's to commemorate the Supreme Court decision in Loving v. Virginia from 1967. An equal protection case. State of Virginia argued that their law against such a nation, the inter-race marriage, was just fine with 14th Amendment, because it applied equally to races. White people had to follow the law and black people had to follow the law. And this is where we come in with substantive due process. It only distinguishes between blacks and whites. The law only exists to stop blacks and whites getting together, so therefore discriminate based on race. And so... Not much to do with Juneteenth, but all part of the history, all happening much around the same time, except for Loving Day, which was much, much later. We're slow, but we're getting there.
Thank you. Jeffrey Shear. Hello. Good to see you.
Great panel there.
All right. This is for LGBTQ+ Pride Month proclamation, which I should have said in the chair. I'll sit here. Jeffrey Shear, correct?
Shears.
Shears.
With an S.
With an S.
Yep.
Jeffrey Shear. I'm not getting it wrong. All right. Whereas Pride Month comes at a time of significant challenges for the LGBTQ+ community, making it all the more important for the City of Morgantown to reaffirm its steadfast commitment to ensuring safety, dignity, and equality for all LGBTQ+ individuals. Without shame, without fear. And whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots, a series of demonstrations led by the black and brown trans women occurring in June 1969, generally recognizes catalyst of the US LGBTQ+ civil rights movement. And whereas the LGBTQ+ communities in Morgantown, including many of its diverse members, are an integral and vibrant part of the academic, economic, artistic, and social spheres of Morgantown. And whereas the City of Morgantown is dedicated to preventing discrimination and working to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists, is imperative that all members of our community feel valued, safe, included, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas the City recognizes the right of the LGBTQ+ community to safely and openly gather, celebrate, and protest. And whereas each June, the City encourages... City of Morgantown encourages its residents to celebrate the progress within our culture toward justice, equality, and full recognition for LGBTQ+ persons and join us in the fight to eradicate prejudice and discrimination everywhere. Now, therefore, I, Joe Albigam, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the entire City Council, do proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Morgantown and urge all community members to stand with us and join in celebrating the members of our LGBTQ+ community and working to make our city vibrant, safe, equitable, and inclusive. Maybe if you tell us about as new president of Morgantown Pride?
Jeffrey Shears?
Saturday.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Shears. I am the new president of Morgantown Pride. Before that, I held a state title, Mr. Rainbow Pride of West Virginia. And I got to travel around the state last year and visited pride events throughout the state and got to really involve with our community and our Rainbow family. Saturday, we held our pride event down at the waterfront. Despite the rain, everybody came out, had a good time. I hadn't heard any complaints, only compliments. So I can't... can't say enough about the wonderful staff and people that helped put that together. Brian definitely was one of the major leaders in that before I showed up. So thank you so much for that. A lot of people think about Pride Month as, honestly, a month that shouldn't exist. It's a silly to them, because they don't understand that their freedoms and rights haven't been attacked or taken away from them. Pride Month takes a deeper meaning this year as we face an increasingly challenging political climate. Across the country, we are seeing a disturbing rise in legislation and rhetoric aimed at eliminating and limiting the rights, safety, and dignity of our LGBTQ... LGBT QIA family, particularly our trans and non-binary siblings. These are not isolated attacks. They are coordinated that are meant to push us back into the shadows. And those who wish to see us erased make it... make this event even more clear as why we need to celebrate pride. Pride started as a riot, not a celebration. More than 50 years ago, pride began as an act of resistance in June 1969 at the Stonewall Inn. A diverse group of queer and transgender individuals stood up against the systematic injustice. At the forefront of this courageous resistance were black and brown transgender women, including Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera. The response to years of political violence and discrimination and social marginalization, the response to that was to resist, not to remain silent. That pivotal moment ignited a global movement for our rights and visibility. Today, their courage and legacy endures as we continue our unwavering pursuit for justice and inclusion. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, our elected officials in the City of Morgantown for reaffirming that June is Pride Month and that Morgantown is an inclusive city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Harshberger. Would you please join me? Surprise.
Surprise, not surprise.
It's not that much of us.
What's that?
Got bigger audience.
Yeah, like I think everybody should... This is the last part of your Citizens Academy. So if you all want to come in, like, I'm sure. As long as you don't block the family. That's the big... You guys have chairs over here. We wanted to make sure that you have the biggest audience possible. Well, that's great. All right. So with the last part of Citizens Academy, this is the full circle moment here. Whereas Counselor Dave Harshberger has faithfully served the residents of Morgantown 6th Ward from July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2025, bringing the City Council a deep commitment to public service, civic wellness, and thoughtful policymaking rooted in over three decades of professional experience in health and wellbeing. And whereas Counselor Harshberger, a lifelong advocate for healthier communities, has worked for more than 30 years as a wellness professional. 24 of those years with West Virginia University Medicine, helping individuals and organizations build strategies to increase safety, health, and community wellbeing. And whereas he has served the City of Morgantown beyond the council's days as a former member of the Traffic Commission and as the city's appointed representative to the Morgantown Utility Board since 2022, consistently representing the public's interests with clarity, integrity, and care. And whereas Counselor Harshberger has been a longtime leader of the Mon River Trails Conservancy, currently serving as president of its board, where he has champion transformative trail projects such as the Greenmont Connector Bridge, the Collins Ferry Connector, and the Van Boris Trailhead, creating sustainable recreation opportunities and strengthening community connectivity on the 48-mile rail trail. And whereas he has also served as the Board of Directors as a past president of the Wellness Council of West Virginia, advocating for policies that promote healthier lifestyles across the state and supporting initiatives such as clean indoor regulations and community-wide health educations. And whereas throughout his time on council, City Council, Counselor Harshberger has thoroughly approached complex issues, including tax reform, annexation, infrastructure, and land use, through the lens of long-term community wellbeing, environmental stewardship, and pedestrian and cyclist safety, never losing sight of the people his decisions would affect. And whereas a proud Morgantown native who returned in 95 to raise his family, Counselor Harshberger has dedicated his public service to making Morgantown a place that current and future generations can properly call home. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Joe Albigam, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize and express our deepest gratitude to Counselor Dave Harshberger for his dedication, dedicated service, thoughtful leadership, and enduring contributions to the City of Morgantown. We commend his communities, his commitment to his health, sustainability, and civic collaboration, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. I was gonna say, do you want to say it for us? And then...
Yeah, I would... Just like to say thank you, and it's been an honor to serve on City Council the last six years. And my family is here, so I'd like to welcome... or offer and welcome them to come up and maybe get a group picture with my family. So my wife, daughter, son-in-law, and my grandchild, and my son.
I was actually gonna say, I'd like to get everybody.
We can do multiple photos.
Yeah, yeah. That works.
Yeah.
They came home from New York. Don't they live in New York?
Yeah, actually, I... We have one more.
Yeah.
Sure. Did you have anything else you wanted to say? All right.
Now we see why you want to leave council. Like, that baby is cute. Sorry, Dave. Sorry.
Counselor... Kueke.
Again, Ben.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bill, Bill, Bill.
Sneaky guy.
No, not me.
Yes. You. All right, here we go. I'm trying to make sure I do this right. I sat next to Bill for many years, so... He usually carries me through these things, but this is the first time I'm gonna have to carry it myself. All right, ready? Whereas William Bill Kueke has faithfully served the residents of the 2nd Ward in the City of Morgantown with integrity, dedication, and vision across five consecutive terms on Morgantown City Council, beginning on July 1st, 2013. And whereas Counselor Kueke brought to his role a creative and thoughtful approach as a retired graphic designer, consistently demonstrating a commitment to civic improvement, transparent governance, and the wellbeing of all Morgantown residents. And the wellbeing earned. And whereas... And whereas from 2017 to 2019, Counselor Kueke served with distinction as Mayor of Morgantown, leading the city through strategic initiatives and addressed community priorities ranging from recreational planning to infrastructure, housing, and neighborhood revitalization. And whereas Counselor Kueke has served on the Board of Directors of the West Virginia Municipal League for over nine years, diligently guiding the work of the Association for the Benefit of All West Virginians living in the state, cities, towns, and villages by applying his experience and his thoughtful, compassionate outlook to address the challenges faced by local governments, while respecting the individuality of the state's municipal officials and supporting the variety of communities they serve. And whereas Counselor Kueke has been a steadfast presence on numerous city boards, commissions, and regional committees throughout his tenure, including longstanding service on the Historic Landmarks Commission from 2013 to present, the Housing Advisory Commission from 2014 to present, and the Morgantown Montegalia Metropolitan Planning Organization. And whereas his contributions also extended the Traffic Commission, Arts Mon, and the Metropolitan Theater Commission, the Airport Advisory Committee, Sunny Side Up, and the Greater Morgantown Convention and Visiting Bureau, reflecting his wide-ranging commitment to preserving the city's cultural heritage, enhancing transportation and planning, and strengthening neighborhoods. And whereas Counselor Kueke was an early proponent of the Rivertown Project in 2013, highlighting his enduring dedication to environmental and community-based initiatives. And whereas over more than a decade of service, Counselor Kueke has earned the respect of his colleagues and constituents for his thoughtful deliberation, steady leadership, and unwavering belief in collaborative governance and public service. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Joe Albigam, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize and express our deepest gratitude to Counselor William Bill Kueke for his exceptional service and lasting contributions to the City of Morgantown. Further, the council extends its best wishes to Counselor Kueke in all future endeavors with the confidence that his legacy of public service will continue to inspire generations to come. So if you want to say something.
He's got me off guard. I wasn't expecting this. And I very much appreciate it. And it's been my pleasure to serve quite truthfully. I'm choked up. And I don't... I'm gonna do that. So thank you so very much.
Where do you think that's if we're in front of the...
All right. Now everybody's eyes up here. One, two, three.
Harshberger family, please don't leave yet.
Squeeze that knee.
Harshberger family. Can you come up? Would Joe come up and take a clean and nice photo of us real quick? Your last one?
I wasn't prepared for it.
I know, I'm sorry. It's important to get all the pictures.
That's right.
And that's the best advice I was given was just take the pictures. You'll appreciate it.
What's important, Stan?
Always take the pictures.
It's just a great organization. We're an association of all the cities and towns of the state. The council's been on our board for many years. The board keeps us in line and makes sure we're doing the mission we're supposed to do for citizens and towns. Sometimes those boards, you have people who show up and they're watching like so much. And sometimes you block it out and get someone who actually thinks about... so much, and sometimes you luck it up and get someone who actually thinks about the things that you're doing, makes that contribution to all the cities, so thank you.
Do you have? Yes. I just wanna make sure that this gets moved.
Watching at home key.
So my name is Shannon Davis, as most of you guys know, I am currently our marketing coordinator for the city of Morgantown, soon to be our special projects coordinator. But I have been working with this group for the last nine weeks. This presentation is mostly gonna be them giving it, but the first section is just me kinda informing you guys about some of the things that they've accomplished during this time. So throughout the session, we had twenty-two spots that were originally offered, twenty-one of our participants accepted, ninety-five point two percent of our participants completed. We had one that had to drop out midway through the program because of his workload outside of here, he wanted to complete it, he just didn't have the ability to. We had an eighty-eight point nine participant attendance rate, which kind of averaged out to about one average, or one absence per participant. Twenty-five percent of them came and attended the optional cleanup event we had on a weekend, which was during Pride, and the Arts Walk, and all of these other things, so they were downtown amongst everybody. And then over the nine weeks that they were learning, they met with seventeen different internal divisions or departments, six city or community partners, and then four of you wonderful councillors. So they accomplished a lot during this time, but I'm gonna kinda let them take the full reins on talking about what they've learned and, you know, what they helped to do in this community, so whatever questions you may have for them at the end, they're also here to answer as well. So with that being said. First reps, there we go.
Hi, everyone, my name's Stephanie, I'm gonna kick us off by sharing some of the reasons we're here, but first off.
Kendrick Fish.
And I'm Monica Moses.
And not with us today is John Gatling, well, not, not with us, not here, present. So, for many of us, this experience started with curiosity, we wanted to better understand Morgantown's government, how it operates day-to-day, how decisions are made, and how different departments fit together. Some of us were also curious about our local government compared to like what we've seen at state or federal level, and beyond just understanding structure, a lot of us joined because we cared deeply about Morgantown, and we want to be part of shaping it for the better. We were looking for ways to be more informed and involved, and to contribute to a positive change in the city, and we were driven by a desire to identify areas where things could be improved and help move those conversations forward. Another reason was wanting to get real firsthand insight, and for me personally, I joined because I was actively running for city council, and I wanted a grounded, practical understanding of how the operations felt, like hearing directly from the people working in each department. I felt like that would give me an understanding more than I could get just reading about it online or attending meetings. And then a lot of us wanted to understand intergovernmental collaboration, so we have a Montegalia County employee who's part of our team, they wanted to build a stronger relationship between city and county governments, and for some people, they heard from Citizens Academy alumni, and they heard how great it was from their friends, and how eye-opening the program was, and they wanted to become a part of that experience as well. All in all, we came with a shared motivation to become more informed, more engaged, and more equipped to continue meaningfully to our community. Thank you. Did you guys have anything to add? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, the papers are all messed up, so that's a good way to start. There it is. Okay, well, I would argue, and some people might, here might not agree with me, but I think we have the most important slide here, because that's why we all joined, to learn. I know for me specifically, I wanted to learn more about the city I live in and get more involved, so we're gonna sum it up at the beginning, and then we'll sum it up again at the end, but there's a lot of information, so I'll go as quick as I can. Megan actually shared this poem here, and we think that it really applies to you all as councillors and to everybody that works in the city government. One tree can start a forest, one smile can begin a friendship, one hand can lift a soul, one word can frame the goal, one candle can wipe out darkness, one laugh can conquer gloom, one hope can raise your spirits, one touch can show you care, one life can make a difference. We were really inspired by how few of you run the city and do it successfully, so we just thought that that really encapsulated how we feel about the work that you do. So we'll go through each different category, and just kinda, I'll somewhat read from the slides, 'cause like I said, it's a lot of info. So we started at the fire department, we learned about how rigorous their training was, and we're really impressed by that. The equipment costs surprised us, and their quick response times, and how they responded as well. We were surprised by how fast the water ran from the truck without a hydrant, and that three-to-four minute timeframe, and gained a new appreciation for the danger and dedication of firefighters. And then moving on to urban landscape and city beautification, we were really impressed by the planning that goes behind the public spaces and all the landscaping. I guess I didn't realize that it took so much, and it gave me much more of an appreciation personally. And then on that same line, the detail in the flowerbed designs and tree planting efforts. And then along with our poem there, one tree can start a forest, just a metaphor for the small actions making a big impact. I think everybody, including urban landscape and, you know, anything that goes behind the beautification of the city, is definitely like, one hand can make a, an impact there. The grant writing, we really wanted to mention that because we were amazed by the eighty percent success rate of the city grant writer. I know, I know a lot about grant writing personally, and I just was blown away by that. Learned how one word can make or break a grant application, I work in legal marketing, I know a lot about how one word can throw you off, and then gained insight into the power of language and securing funding, same thing there. And, I don't have the next slide, so I'll go off the TV. The arts culture and recreation, Bo Park, arts and cultural development, and the library. We were just really happy with how passionate they were. I, I know it took a toll on me in just thinking about how everything behind all of these events, it's just amazing, and they were so passionate, it made me feel good to be in the city, because you, you just don't see that every day. And then we were surprised by the range of library services and the impact of outdoor recreation on our well-being as citizens. The city garage and infrastructure, we enjoyed seeing how street signs were made and taking one home, that was really fun, and gained an appreciation for the hands-on work that keeps the city running. We go M U V and wastewater management, we learned about storm, drinking and wastewater systems, I know that's something I personally had no clue how any of that worked, so that was interesting, and surprised by the zero violations and multiple platinum awards for the water folly. The parking authority, we found the session practical and enlightening, especially for everyday city life, gained a better understanding of parking strategy and enforcement, and honestly, I learned a lot from that one, that I took home with me that affects my everyday life. And then the Morgantown Municipal Airport, we were excited by the runway expansion and the I sixty-eight Commerce Park development, and appreciated the vision and leadership behind the airport's growth. And we also put in, I think the three of us specifically, put in some reflections and surprises. We just said it's amazing how much gets done behind the scenes with so few people. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Marketing Communications Department, I'm on a marketing team in my legal office, and there's twelve of us, and they crank out way more work than we do, and I work my tail end off, so I just like, am so impressed by the program and them specifically. We all looked forward to class, there was lots of laughing and connecting and definitely learning. And just to wrap us up, one smile, one word, one hope, each department left a lasting impression, and we are incredibly thankful, and I think we can all say that we learned a lot from this program, so anything from you guys?
If you didn't introduce yourselves.
Oh yeah, I'm Maddie Wilson.
Megan Williams.
Jeff Stinger.
Who are we missing? We're missing Nathan Garrett and Erica. I think they both had a work thing, so.
What an excuse.
Good for Erica. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joanna Di Pietro.
I'm Cosmos Scott.
I'm Kim Bodenski, and we are team number three. So what I'm gonna present is how our perspectives changed. So when I started, actually, I get a lot of civics class from my daughter, she's sixteen, she goes to Amages. So I was so happy that I could actually participate, and, hands-on, and the signs for the street were great, 'cause I feel like I own my street now, so just put my cylinder in my driveway. But I feel like it's so important for us citizens to actually see how you work, because, you know, sometimes we just feel that it's like fun job, and we, yeah, could experience that, maybe not always, like there are fun moments, but not always, so I'll just get my slide here very quickly. I was prepared, I promise, but yes, it's on my phone, it's like really small, so. So our broader understanding of local government, I think it was quite important, because I think we, we know our local government, I've been only here for seven years, so I have lots to, lots to learn, but I think I've learned a lot already. So I was amazed, like, you know, by the infrastructure here sometimes, like, you know, po- holes in a, in a, in the road, on the roads, and like snow and stuff, and then I found out so many things that actually go together with that, so now I have like better understanding why things work the way they work, which for outsiders like me, I think it's quite important. So we gain a deeper appreciation for the complexity of city operations, we realized how interconnected departments are and how much collaboration is required. We are amazed by that, because we met you, and then, you know, we had, you're the team behind us and in front of us, so we really appreciated that, and the fact that you took time and even wanted to meet with us, that's, that's really great. We are surprised, actually, by how much is accomplished with limited staff and resources. So the rest, we have hu- bigger respect for the, all the city employees, we already had respect, but now we have bigger ones, so. We discovered that city staff are highly qualified, dedicated, and passionate. We were so impressed by their work ethic, professionalism, and pride in serving in Morg- here in Morgantown, it's the best city. From bureaucracy to community, shifted view of government from distant and bureaucratic to a living network of people, so we can see now that you are like approachable, so if we have any problems, we can just come here, we can yell, or we can be calm. It's tough, like I can't even imagine like sitting there and somebody's yelling and just like with this straight face, and just be like, so understanding, so kudos.
We only yelled a little bit.
Yes.
Lock council meeting.
Yes, that was awesome.
I think I should be clear, we were face residents in a lock.
Yes, yes, definitely. So we also learn how, we also learn how the public input shapes policy and how citizen voices ma- matters, so that's actually really great that you listen to us, like not the shouting voice, but like normal, we can call you and talk. So our unique reflections, cue country roads, ask my daughter to start singing, but.
So our other person who's waiting here, he actually, it's his granddaughter's graduation, so that's why he didn't make it either, but that's his quote specifically.
So I'm horrible in singing, so I'm not gonna sing, however, I like the song. Actually, I'm from Poland, and my, and my brother goes to Germany very often, and they listen on the airport very often, the country roads, same, when he goes with his friends now, he listens to the country roads very often, he sends us even like little, you know, movies, so we sing with him. So Morgantown truly deserves its reputation as the premier small city. The Citizens Academy didn't just teach us about government, it gave us hope, vision, and responsibility. Now, when I'm out in town, I see things I would always seen, but now I appreciate the effort behind them. After being part of this, I see that every city employee was on their A-game. It's changed the way we think about local government, not as something distant, but as people working hard every day, and we work together, which makes like really great team effort. We are leaving this experience more informed, more inspired, and ready to be active partners in building a brighter future. So if you want us to do anything, you can reach out, yeah, I think you have like our, yes. We are ready. So thank you very much for that experience, it was really great, thank you.
Kirsten Chow.
Myla Kaboyao.
Kenneth Baker.
And we are here to tell you about how we plan to stay involved in Morgantown, that's kind of an important part of this class, we wanted to learn about the city, and now we would like to find ways to plug in. There's the three Cs, communication, collaboration, and consultation. The academy gave us a foundation to understand how to engage, and now we are ready to act. So some ways we plan to act is civic engagement, attending city council meetings and public meetings to help us stay informed on local decisions and policies that will impact our lives, to help us remain engaged in the legislative process and to offer input, to vote in local elections, we know how important that is, thanks to Christine coming to talk to us about that, and to use our voices to shape the future of Morgantown. We plan to, some of us join neighborhood or city boards and participate in groups like the library board, the tree board, or the parks advisory committees to find other ways to be engaged and use our voices. We plan to volunteer and take part in community actions, such as participating in cleanup events to help beautify and maintain public spaces, to volunteer for local programs, supporting food drives, community events, and inclusive initiatives, and to attend downtown events to show support for city improvements and to help foster a community spirit. And we'll stay connected with each other and with the city. For with each other, we have our Citizens Academy Facebook group to help us stay in touch with fellow participants and with city updates. We can follow City Hall on social media, I know the crew does a great job to keep it updated with news, events, and opportunities for us to stay involved. And I think one of the more important things beyond the top civic engagement one is, we'll share what we've learned, I know I've already been like telling my friends how great this experience was, and spreading awareness of how the city works, because we have that little bit more of an insider's perspective, and it can help to dispel some of the more negative stigmas surrounding city efforts, because we know how hard everyone in this room and in the city is working to really make it better for everyone. Do we have anything? Thank you so much.
Hi councillors, I'm Kirsten Lancia. in informative sessions. We experienced a total of nine sessions, and as the subheading suggests, they were all incredibly informative. Each session offered different, yet equally valuable, information, as the last making for an overall refreshing and well-rounded experience. Each session was led by at least one city staff member or organizer, often we had the privilege of listening to several. In total, I believe we had 32 different speakers, and each of the 32 were by far and away highlights of our sessions. Their dedication, preparation, and willingness to engage with me and my classmates does not go unnoticed. Speaking of engagement, the sessions' environments were all very welcoming and inviting. The speakers always encouraged open discussions, enfolded scores of questions, and the hands-on activities that accompanied these speakers' presentations and, I guess, lectures, they helped bring the weekly material to life, which gave us all a better standing of the And then, these past nine weeks have offered powerful insight into the inner workings of our local government and the surprisingly few people who keep it running and functioning on a day-to-day basis. I think we would all be lying if we were to say that we didn't walk away with a greater sense of responsibility and pride and appreciation for the city of Morgantown and its staff. And then, these past nine weeks have offered powerful insight into the inner workings of our local government and the surprisingly few people who keep it running and functioning on a day-to-day basis. I think we would all be lying if we were to say that we didn't walk away with a greater sense of responsibility and pride and appreciation for the city of Morgantown and its staff. Could you actually go one more? Or I guess two more, too bad. Sorry. Or two, I guess, two more forward. There it is, there it is, okay. No, that was my... To quickly address some suggestions for future sessions, most of us agreed that we would like to extend the lengths of the sessions from two hours to two and a half hours, just to ensure that all members can ask any questions they may have and participate in the activity if they would like to do so. At the end of each session, many of us often would ask the speaker or speakers for their contact info, or just ways to stay in touch with them and their departments, and we hypothesized that simply including business cards in the weekly handouts would mitigate the end-of-session question stampedes that would often occur, and it would be an easier way for participants to stay connected. And finally, we would like to see more out-of-class engagement and volunteer opportunities, specifically tied to the Citizens Academy sessions. Additionally, a WVU student-specific version of this program would be a pretty neat idea. When WVU is in session, Morgantown's population almost doubles, and we think it'd be nice for the student half of the population to be civically engaged and contribute however We want to make sure we respect everyone's time this evening, so I won't read all 32 of the speakers' names presented, but once again, and this is, I mean what I say here when I say that these sessions would not be nearly as interesting without them, they were all incredibly enthusiastic and offered insight on so many different topics that none of us had really any understanding of prior to the sessions. Special thanks to our city councilors and our Citizens Academy program leads, Shannon Davis, Nikki Lauffer, wherever she went, and then Brad Riffey. They were the backbone of this program, and none of the sessions would have occurred without them. I believe that's everything we had this evening. On behalf of the class, thank you all for your time and the opportunity to present and the opportunity to participate in these sessions, and I think, happy to answer any questions you all may have.
If there are councilors with any questions for any of the citizens to answer this, please stand at their reception desk.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just so I have the certificate, you wanted to...
Proclamation first, and then you can do each of their certificates, and I can be able to make sure each of them with you in the certificate, if that works.
However you'd like to do it.
Yeah, why don't you do the proclamation part first?
Okay, I wasn't sure if you wanted to give them certificates, then do the proclamation.
Do the proclamation reading part first, because I've got all their additional copies back here, aside from the one, so it'll probably speed it up to do it that way.
So I'll stand up here alone and read this part.
So I wanted to tell them, because they don't know what's happening, so...
Whereas, an informed and engaged community is vital to the health of a thriving city, government, and whereas, community education programs, such as the Morgantown Citizens Academy, provide residents with the unique opportunity to learn about the structure, functions, and service of their local government, and whereas, the Citizens Academy helps cultivate civic leaders by fostering greater understanding, transparency, and trust between the city government and the people it serves, and whereas, participants of the Citizens Academy dedicate their time and energy to becoming active, informed stakeholders in our city's future, with many going on to find additional ways to volunteer their time through community initiatives, and whereas, investing in civic education and leadership development contributes to more well-informed community and a stronger, more connected city. Now, therefore, I, Joseph Abuganam, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of June 15th through 21st, 2025, as Community Learning and Leadership Week in the city of Morgantown, and encourage all residents to learn more about their local government, participate in civic opportunities, and recognize the importance of lifelong public service and engagement. In addition, we would like to highlight our current class of Citizen Academy participants.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you wanna go through each individual and give them their certificates, and that'll just be their names, so...
All right. So now I'll just step back here as I read the names.
And each of you guys, when your name is called, so...
As I read these names, does council wanna like, do you want council up here?
If the rest of the councilors would like to be up there for the pictures, that's fine with me, I love that.
Okay, you love that?
I would.
Okay, I'm not saying I'm here alone either. Council wants to come and help me pass these out. Bill's gonna mess this part up, he's like down on the ground. And I'm going to apologize in advance, if I say anyone's name wrong, I'm sorry. So I figure, I'll read their names, they can grab their certificate, and then we'll do a quick ceremony, sort of thing, and then we'll...
Essentially, like, congratulations.
If you hang here, I'm gonna call their names, and then they'll come on down, take a group picture. All right.
They're not gonna be able to hear his name.
Erica!
They're not gonna be able to hear his name. She's not up here, she's not...
All right. Then I'll...
We want you to be heard.
Thank you, I... Oh yeah, thank you. Emily Junkin.
Brad, I'm trying to get here now. There we go.
All right, you may move your...
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
There we go.
Come on, can you?
Okay. Stinger. Stinger. Stinger.
There we go. Okay.
Kenneth Baker. There you go.
There we go.
There you go. Congratulations. Matt Bowlin. Kabuyao. 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 All right. All right. And Stephanie Hunt. And Stephanie Hunt. And Stephanie Hunt. And Stephanie Hunt. John Gatlin. He's not here. Not here.
So we make sure we have that, so if all of the citizens of the Academy participants will come here with our councilors, we're gonna try to squeeze in for a close photo with the proclamation.
Wait, is that true? They have a...
I don't wanna pull you guys out of council chair, so we'll do it real fast, we'll all squeeze together, just like the last time we had the Citizens Academy, so everybody all squeeze together.
Um...
Let's reach. Yeah. That's it. That's not a whole...
We're gonna need a third row, we're gonna need a third row.
It's all right. There we go, we're getting it. There we go. Great, they're next to Kenneth, but it's not for you. All right, one, two, three. All right, we are good. Yep, there, if you wanna take a look from here, so thank you, councilors, and Citizens Academy, head down the stairs.
Stairway to the...
Thank you. You guys have wonderful...
All right, just say everyone, all right, so we only have to get up three more times.
Where's Bill?
Down to four. I don't, I think... Thank you, Brad.
Like, still calling it done already?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we adjourned.
Susan loves a good city council meeting.
Thank you. All right. Only got like, five more proclamations.
Great, I'm ready to take a photo, or two.
All right, for those watching at home, we are here with Brad Riffey, and he's going to tell us about the municipal ID program.
That's correct, thank you, council. My name is Brad Riffey, I'm the PR and Communications Director for the City of Morgantown. Thank you for having me this evening. This is a follow-up to a meeting we had earlier in the year about the municipal ID program. We've moved to a point where we believe that we can implement the program, and implement the program successfully. I'd like to thank administration, council, for helping us work through some details. So tonight, I'm here to answer any questions, but before I do that, I'd like to run through some of the bullet points of the program, hit the highlights, and then, again, answer any questions you might have. So the whole idea behind the municipal ID program is to foster a stronger community and promote a deeper sense of belonging and unity among all Morgantown residents. It's inclusive for all residents, available to anyone, regardless of age, housing status, or whether you're a longstanding or returning citizen. Hardship affidavit will be available to those who are experiencing various forms of hardship, specifically residents who are seeking housing or financial assistance. We do have that hardship affidavit for them to fill out, and a way to verify that as well. The ID itself will also provide more streamlined access to city services and new initiatives. We have a few new initiatives rolling out this summer. I don't wanna maybe share exactly what those are at this point in time, but we have a lot of great things to look forward to, and there are gonna be ways for those programs to interact with the municipal ID. We've had great conversations with our library, and if folks, if that's the only form of photo identification they have, they'll be able to obtain a library card. We've had some great conversations with local businesses, and that is moving along, those conversations are developing, and basically what we're trying to do is figure out what types of perks and maybe discounts some of our local businesses can offer our municipal ID card holders. They're very excited. These are neat conversations, because they're like, well, what do you suggest? And really, what's nice about the program, it's unique to that business, so whatever they find appropriate, or whatever perk they might be able to offer, they're going to be able to do that. So we're gonna work closely with them, then we have... Then we have other partners, obviously, in the community that we plan to coordinate efforts with as well. So just to maybe list a few right off the top, Bow Park at the Eureka Cafe will offer a buy-one-get-one 50% off on coffees, teas, and matchas. We thought that was a nice perk. And then, once the ice arena opens, they'll offer one free skate admission during a public session once the, again, once the arena opens. The Met will do a free popcorn with a drink. So we're hoping this builds, and then we're having conversations with our local credit union downtown to see if they'll also accept that as a form of identification to open up checking and savings accounts. I know that was a, you know, that financial stability is a very important part of this program if we can build that in. So we're going to have all the conversations that we need to have to hopefully make that happen. So while we're starting here, we see this as a, at a kind of a base level. We see this program as something that will grow over time. So there are all kinds of possibilities that come with providing this service to the community. We also see this as a, the hardware and software is a great way for us to create City of Morgantown employee IDs. And that way, we'll all be photo identified, and they'll replace the key fobs. Is, that's pretty cool. So we're exploring those opportunities as well, and we're super close to buttoning that down. And then ultimately, I think there's this long-term goal with Mountain Line, and we continue to have conversations, and we're going to continue to have conversations as this program evolves to see how that might interface with Mountain Line's public transit system. And we do, we've had, we're very, we have, let's say we're optimistic about where that will go. So, and then once, you know, we're ready to have maybe more detailed conversations about what that looks like, we'll definitely make sure that administration is looped in and we have those conversations so we can make sure that we're providing the best services we can to the people we serve right here in Morgantown. And then we did reach out to Dr. Thompson at Gray Shelter, and she was able to review these documents, specifically the list of proof of identity documents and proof of residency documents required to obtain the ID. And she was confident that her clients would greatly benefit from this program and that these were very inclusive documents for her clients, for them to participate in the program. But obviously, we know that we're going to continue to evaluate the program. We, one, we want to make sure that we put safeguards in place so folks can't just maybe come in and say, oh, I'm councillor Kaweke, you know? So we've been very strategic when we put this, we were very strategic when we put this list together. And again, I want to thank our administration for helping us work through that. Numbers. The grand total, as of right now, would be $2,358.60. And we see this as, again, a program that not, and the hardware and software, again, can be used to create employee IDs. We currently don't have those. It'd be really nice to get everyone badged up. So, you know, we're really just trying to maximize our work with this program, not only for our citizens, right, but for our employees as well.
Okay.
Great. Any questions?
Brad, this, congratulations on this. This is really a nice step of service that you're offering to the community. Do the badges have an opportunity to put some type of a swipe device or load a chip into it so that, you mentioned like the bus service or the library where they could be swiped, and the swiper would know if they have a membership to Bow Park or the pools or something like that?
That's a great question. That capability is there. Now, how that interfaces with the other systems, we have to work through that. But yes, it's definitely possible. It's the same hardware and software that Mountain Line uses, so when we do get to a point where that, those programs can come together, and I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but that capability is yet there. We can mag stripe the back of the card. We plan to use the back of the card. I think we, you know, administration and our office discussed what types of services we might be able to list on the back of the card. We could have a QR code that links us to pathways to help. We can have various numbers and maybe logos on the back of the card, too. So we're not only providing an ID, but we're also promoting access to information within the municipality, which is great. But yes, we, I gave you a long answer there. Yeah, you know, so we just want to maximize the worth of the card.
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
How do you envision, as you move through this program, how changes will work? So if you have a rollout, whenever that is, be it, you know, next month, or six months, or five months, however that works, and then maybe a year from now, there's changes, can that be built into the card? Like, will it have the strip on the back already that then you can, and you said there's a QR code, so you could load more things onto the information you could get from the QR code?
Yeah, so there are a couple of different ways to manage that. We could just take a person's card who does not have that and put it on it, or we could issue a new card, just depending on the condition of the card. So those capabilities are there as well. So, right, and we can create different designs, too, so the employee, obviously, the employee IDs would look different than the municipal IDs.
Thank you, Mary.
See, you did such a good job that you answered all the questions.
Great. Well, thank you. I wanted to, I tried to hit the highlights. But again, if you ever have input, if you have questions, concerns, you know, send those on over. We're happy to address them. We're very excited about this. I think we'd be the first in the state of West Virginia. I know to implement a program like this, it's been done in other states, but we just see this as a way for us to deepen our relationship with, one, our residents, two, our local businesses, and then figure out better ways to maybe serve different populations within the municipality who might need access to various services, and they maybe don't have the right credentials to obtain a state or federal ID, but they do meet the requirements to obtain a photo ID from the municipality.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Brad.
Yeah.
Great job.
Counselors, congratulations. Wish you the best. And if there's anything our office in the City of Morgantown can do for you, don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
All right. Public hearings. First one we have is an ordinance proposing to remove certain parcels from the development district designated the City of Morgantown redevelopment district, number three, the TIF district. Thereby amending the boundaries of the TIF district, extend the TIF district termination date by 15 years beyond its current termination date and permit the issuance of additional tax increment revenue bonds or other obligations to fund additional phases of development within the amended project plan for the TIF district as further described in the tax increment financing application dated April 7, 2025. If you wish to speak on this matter, and only this one, you may do so now. Next, we have an ordinance designating safe surrender sites for a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this matter, you may do so now.
I understand that the city ordinances are meant to mirror the state statutes. I must renew my objection that I made when this first came out. One does not take possession of a baby. One takes custody. Possession, sounds like you're selling it. Here, I give you my baby, gifting, as opposed to taking custody when the child is turned over. Also, it's inconsistent in the ordinance, whether it's a parent who turns it over or any other person. And since we're not allowed to ask who it is, how do we know? The baby can't be older than 30 days old. No birth certificate comes with. How are we supposed to know how old the baby is? Carbon date them or the like. I just see a lot of potential for difficulty with these. And I know there's not a whole lot of choice in passing the statute itself because it's mandated by the state. And ours is really just a change of venues, I believe. But the wording of it is difficult. And as I've said before, we are Morgantown. We can do better. Thanks.
Anybody else? And, quote, "examine." Next, we have an ordinance amending the business licensing and business and occupation tax provisions to comply with updates to state law. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so now. And, close. And we have an ordinance amending Article 1751 entitled "The Housing Code." Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so now.
Hi. Mark Downs, 301 Arch Street. I'm here to speak against approval of the proposed ordinance amending Article 1751. We can all agree that with the proposition, the property owner should be responsive. As drafted, this amendment has the potential, though, to have heavy consequences that cause us to, that should cause us to reconsider how this is, how we implement this. So, because, and my understanding is that the intent was that this was drafted because of a lack of responsiveness to some out-of-town landlords. So my primary objective, objection to the proposed amendment focuses on Section 175105A, where there's a new requirement proffered that requires an agent, operator, or other person be appointed who is regularly accessible to the dwelling in a reasonable amount of time, not to exceed one hour. I argue that not to exceed, responding to anything in under an hour is less than reasonable. But, so first, first of all, do any of you want to sign up to respond to anything under, in under an hour? Do you want to respond to constituents in under an hour? Does any of the city departments want to respond to requests in under an hour? I don't think this is reasonable for us to have levied by city code. This requirement is biased towards large, high-net-well property owners that can afford dedicated property management. This requirement is also, further discourages small local ownership, folks that have full-time jobs, folks that have accessory dwelling units, for instance, that, you know, we purport to support in the 2033 comprehensive plan. If implemented, this requirement will absolutely drive up housing costs. I can't stand here and tell you how much, and I can't, that they will, but I can tell you that they will absolutely rise. For a city that, for a city that talks so much about affordable housing, we should not be intentionally pushing our market toward making housing more expensive. Most problematic with regard to the proposed amendment is what is the consequence of non-needfulness? There is none. So why should property owners comply? There's no disincentive. There, the folks that don't respond today are still not going to respond. This amendment will not work to achieve its intended outcome. In conclusion, like I said when I started, everyone agrees that property owners should be responsive. However, we shouldn't cause our housing market to adjust to a requirement that was proposed and presented as drafted to hold some out-of-town property owners accountable that has no consequences to hold them to account. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Next, we have an ordinance amending a portion of Anderson Avenue from Dogwood to End. Anyone wishes to speak on this matter may do so now. Unfinished business. Should have been below the consent agenda.
Mayor, if there are, that's that are on the consent agenda, the council and whether wishes to take off those, we'd be interested in this.
Okay, thank you. Reclarification. Boards and commissions, do I have any nominations?
We would just start at one end, maybe?
Sure. Right here? Yep.
First, I'd like to nominate Annie Cronin-York to the Human Rights Commission.
My acclamation?
Yep.
Next?
I would like to nominate Bob Cohen.
I have one other one.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I will call back.
I also want to nominate Rich Burks to the Civilian Police Review and Advisory Board.
Second.
My acclamation?
Yep. And I would like to nominate Bob Cohen to the Civilian Police Review and Advisory Board.
Second.
Acclamation?
Yes. I don't have others.
I have two. I would like to nominate Amel Morris to the Bow Park Board. Second.
Acclamation?
And Linda Durfee to the Morgantown Public Library Board.
Second.
Acclamation?
I'd like to nominate Rachel Fuddy to the Police Review Board.
Second.
I have two. Go ahead.
No, you go. I don't have any.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did. Yes, I'd like to nominate Charles McCune to the Parking Authority.
Second.
And also, I'd like to nominate Scott Frederick to the Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
And that was the list that I have. Next, we have the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. As a friendly reminder, you have four minutes to speak. Make sure you state your name and location. Do we have the paper? Yeah, that's one. Oh, they grabbed, grabbed the whip. I will open this public portion now.
Thank you. In continuance on Juneteenth, I have seen something on, several things on social media, saying that Governor Morrissey did not recognize Juneteenth in the state of West Virginia. That is untrue. He did issue a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, as is condemned by Governor Justice four years before that. His proclamation is much like ours. We said we were claiming it a holiday. It is not a paid time off holiday. It's not a work holiday. It's recognition of the day itself. Part of the problem of why it's not a paid time off holiday for the state or the city, I would imagine, is because it's back-to-back with West Virginia Day. So Juneteenth is on the 19th, and West Virginia Day is on the 20th. And just for the city, I've been told by the acting city manager that it costs a quarter million dollars to give a paid day off for city employees. And so to do that two days in a row for our Juneteenth and West Virginia Day might be asking a bit much. No judgment. In our current political climate, such as it is, protests are great. These protests even better. I think Morgantown does a fantastic job of people speaking out and behaving themselves well all the way. And I think that we celebrate all the right things and recognize all the right people. And the city council does a very good job of that, as does the city administration. And I would just ask that we are, remain conscientious about maintaining the rule of law. And we've got our rules, and sometimes it's easy to forget them and just let them slide. I'm not saying anybody's doing that, but please, let's just be aware and stick to the rules such as we have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Close. All right. No special committee reports. Consent agenda, is there any item anybody wishes to move to the new business section?
I'd like to move the housing.
Item D.
Yeah. Just for discussion purposes, yeah. Okay. Any others? Okay. Then, by consent for items A, the ordinance proposing to remove parcels from Development District Then, by consent for items A, the ordinance proposing to remove parcels from development district designated in City Morgantown, redevelopment district number three, thereby amending the boundary to the TIF district and the TIF district termination date by 15 years and permanent issuance of additional tax increments, revenue bonds, or their obligations upon additional phases of development within the amended project plan for the TIF district as followed, describing the tax increment funding advancing application dated April 7, 2025. Item B, consideration of approval of an ordinance designating safe surrender sites. Item C, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance amending the business licensing and business operations tax provision to comply with updates to state law. And not item D, but item E, the consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending a portion of Anderson Avenue from Dogwood to End.
Move to approve.
Second.
Clerk Wood. Is it the clerk or the acclamation?
So called.
So called. Thank you.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Luizy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Selene?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor McGonagall?
Yes. All one, two, three, four of them pass. Seven, zero. It's been a minute since we had a consent agenda that long. All right. So under new business, do we start with, does it matter the order? If we start with or end with the second reading, do you turn?
Let's start with the ordinance that was removed from the consent agenda, since that would be the ordinary first item of business.
Sounds good. All right. The consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending Article 1751 entitled The Housing Code.
Thank you, Mayor. This, as council has previously heard from the building official and development services director, contains a few administratively requested updates to the text of the Housing Code, which contains the city's rental registration and inspection provisions. These are mostly coordinating definitional terms with other codes that the building official and deputies enforce, like the vacant structures code. The, as was noted in the public hearing, there is a, one addition, one of those additions is a requirement that in order to register rental, the applicant either be living at a location or have somebody designated at a location where they could reasonably respond within an hour to a request from code enforcement for entry. That was, I believe, previously explained to council as, as being requested by code enforcement to ensure that they can reach someone either in an emergency situation or just where they may need to enter and inspect. There is a pre-existing requirement that the, that there be a designated agent within the state to allow for service of processes if needed. If council would like to amend the ordinance just to address that sort of one-hour agent provision, you could move to amend the ordinance by striking the new language, "who is regularly able to access the dwelling in a reasonable amount of time not to exceed one hour," from Section 751.05a3b. As you know, this ordinance is on second reading. The council cannot make an amendment that is material to the ordinance and pass it on the same reading, but that is, generally, materiality is considered to be something that alters the purpose of the amendment. My expectation is that that would be considered an amendment that you could, if you choose, make on second reading and pass the remainder of the ordinance. I'm sorry. If you, your, your ordinary procedure would be a, a motion to approve the ordinance and a second, so that council can discuss the item, and then, if you choose, a motion to amend, as I have described.
Move to approve.
Second. Again, discussion.
So, I mean, one hour does seem a little bit strange.
Does it say they have to be there within an hour, or they just have to be within an hour?
Respond in an hour? I mean, I pick that's up to interpretation, right?
It's a, it's a requirement for the application for registration, which happens every three years. So it's, the, the requirement is just that you designate an agent who is, who is within that kind of response area, I presume.
So within a one hour?
And so if you didn't do that, you would get your application denied, but if you did do that, you would get your application approved, and it doesn't, as was noted in the public hearing, it does not say you will then respond to code enforcement within an hour or else.
Yeah.
It's just that you have to have someone who theoretically would be within an hour's distance.
Respond, respond via phone or respond by being there in person?
No, like being able to travel to get to that set.
To that set.
It's regularly able to access the dwelling.
Yeah. Can we make that more clear?
Certainly.
It is in our, do we know why that was? Obviously, that's a quick amount of time, but do we know why that was chosen by code to be responsive to the premise within an hour versus two hours or?
Twenty-four.
I, I think, as far as I recall it, just, just for the reasons I stated, that it, it assists them with having somebody able to respond if they either need to respond to an emergency situation, you know, and sometimes they'll be called in need to evacuate the building during off-hours, or to respond when they need to, to enter to inspect, whether that's to inspect ongoing work or on a.
The other thing they had mentioned was people having, that oversee buildings, living like three hours away. And that was part of the concern. Is that right?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's true also. Like I said, they, they have been operating under this ordinance since, I believe, 2020. So, yeah. I don't expect that adding that requirement is urgent, and if you wanted to get more input from code enforcement on their specific needs and, and kind of craft that more carefully, I don't think it would be a problem to remove that, that provision from this ordinance. However, if you have ideas about what would more specifically address that and you would like to amend that way as well, I'm happy to work on it.
Mayor. Mayor. Question I have for you is typically in, in an emergency, what would be code's response without this?
What in emergency? I think it would just contact the tenant and, and gain access. But, but there may be.
So there are mechanisms in place currently in an emergency that would take care of this? I mean, whether we had to call the police, the fire department, or our code, right?
That would address the safety of the occupant, but not necessarily any remedial measures that need to be taken at the building.
Okay. So the, we're really dealing not so much with the occupants, but with the, the structure itself?
Possibly. Yeah, again, I'm, I'm not the best person to answer these questions.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify. That's all.
I think there's a, a number of instances that it's trying to address, and so this is why, when it was put in here, and it's trying to look for, you know, these are rental units, so these are all four properties that are registered as rentals, so having somebody that can respond quickly if and as needed. So, you know, we're typically dealing with situations when other, we're either, you know, trying to get into a unit that has had some type of emergency, that has some kind of more immediate need for property maintenance, or, or some kind of building response, you know, or, you know, oftentimes, we will need to get into the property to inspect or something else, and then trying to arrange something with those individuals.
I have, I have a great sympathy for what you're saying. Just, this is not something that's unique to Morgantown. This is something that I've heard complaints about throughout the state, the idea of absentee ownership and not being able to hold the owner responsible for, for the current activities or the current conditions of the buildings that they're supposedly on. I'm just looking for a way to address that in a manner that is not going to be inhibiting the rightful owner, the proper, the, the correct owner, the, I'm looking for the word that would make it, the responsible owner. How can we craft that? It's really what I'm saying. Yes, you know, an hour is unreasonable, but how can we do this that would be, have the requirement in place, but make it more responsible in terms of what we're asking in terms of a reasonable response?
Bill, I would suggest maybe that we move to strike not to exceed one hour, but I think that we could make this, probably make this clearer and more.
I agree. What I'm looking for is the language.
Afterwards, so maybe for now, we can strike not to exceed one hour and then think about how this would be cleared and amended in the future.
I think having, I think having.
Have a better.
Come and tell us what is your, your ultimate goal.
Yeah. Have a better way of writing this language that meets their goals.
I think, I think their goal is obviously in that they're looking for someone that they could actually contact about the problems that they currently have, and get a response. I think what happens now is you can't identify who these people are. I mean, and, and they're in Never Neverland trying to solve a problem that it's not anything that they've, they've caused. There needs to be a way of addressing that.
I've heard instances of, for example, a water leak in an apartment that is leaking into a neighboring apartment, but the landlord is out of town and cannot be reached, and the, the tenant of that apartment with the water leak is a student who's gone for the summer. So I think situations like that, when I've talked to code enforcement about this particular thing, situations like that are what's been brought up.
And I agree. I have a, like, there's a resident in my ward where they live in somewhere in the Midwest, and the house has been empty, and animals had gotten in.
Oh, yeah.
And were causing issue for the neighbors, and no one could be accessed to get in there within a few days before they'd be able to allow somebody to access it.
So the idea of reasonableness is not based on every single time the exact same amount of, you know, that everyone would be there and they're not gone. The local person could be gone. So it's just the idea, and, and I think it's especially important with the accepting service of process, because that's happened a lot here, where somebody needs to either address someone directly or serve them so that, you know, they can receive their citation or whatever official documents need to, um, need to be proffered, and it's just nutty to say, oh, well, we can't really work with that property because they have an out-of-town owner. So I think it's important, this accepting of service and a reasonable amount of time. I guess we could just strike the not exceed one hour, like you said.
Yeah. And maybe think of just like how we can make a, because I think it wasn't, wasn't clear to me either that it was like they need to be, it seemed to me like that meant within an hour at any point in any, at any time of the day, they need to be there, you know what I mean?
Well, that's, it's a theory.
Yeah.
Well, and there's a difference between a random, in an emergency situation. So I'm fine with clarifying. Yeah. I'm fine with clarifying.
So I'd move to amend the ordinance to strike not to exceed one hour in section, whatever that is.
I would second that. Okay. If, clerk, we take, we draw on that.
On that amendment.
Please.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Luizy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Selene?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor McGonagall?
Yes. Amendment passes. Was that our concern then? So are we good, other one? Because any other changes at that point would be.
Mm-hmm. Well, substantial.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
We already had the rest of the articles.
Yeah, we already had that motion, so we can just call it, Chris.
All right.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Luizy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Selene?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor McGonagall?
Yes. Passes the amended version, seven, zero. Next, we have new business, consideration of approval of a resolution amending the 2425 budget, revision number eight for the Morgantown Capital S. Crowe Fund. Mr. John Ferguson, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I have the opportunity to present to you the final fiscal year 25 budget revision. John Ferguson, Finance Director, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm going to make this very short, very sweet. This budget revision is to finalize or to finish up the municipal airport's ask of $60,000 for support for their marketing campaign. We have funded this through the use of our new money market fund. This is the remaining interest that we have realized through the end of May 2025, with a little bit left over going to our contingency fund. Any questions on it?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Short sweep. Anytime you want to move that to consent agenda, that's awesome.
For the next one. Do you, did you second any of these?
Yes.
All right. Think we're good to go to the question?
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Luizy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Selene?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor McGonagall?
Yes. Passes seven, zero. Next, we have a consideration of approval of the bid award, 2025, 15, asbestos abatement and demolition of 1110, 1112, and 1116, University Avenue, and restoration of, man, this one's really, please tell us about this.
Included in your packet is the asbestos abatement and demolition of what really looks like two properties, three addresses on University Avenue. These are the former condemned Bartlett House properties along the Boulevard. This, we'd previously gone out to bid. Funding had changed for this particular project, so we had to go, go out to bid again, and this time included some of the asbestos abatement that had been since found in that property. So we received two bids, the low bid for Bloom Gold Development in the bid amount of Seems to be the lowest responsible bidder, and we are recommending a word of that contract to Bloom Gold.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
What are the source of these funds?
This would be through the Community Development Block Grant Fund, C2BG.
The ones that were about to expire and we had to use somewhere?
There are some timeliness issues on some of the funds, but part of those funds were set aside for demolition of properties, dilapidated properties.
Mayor, this put us in position then to take the building down?
Yes, this would take the building down.
And does that, I'm trying to remember the cost on that. Is that bid still appropriate, or is it changed in, because of this delay?
That's a spin.
That is a spin. There was a, a prior bid, which I believe was about $10,000 to $15,000 less, but that did not cover the asbestos abatement. And again, from the initial funding source to this current funding source, we were able to do some additional asbestos testing, and that is what increased that cost.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Please, and thank you.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Luizy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Selene?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor McGonagall?
Yes. Passes seven, zero. City managers.
Thank you. Before I get to my report, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. Congratulations to Council Harshberger and Council Kowicki. Sitting on council is usually a thankless job, and you both have taken time away from your family and your lives to serve the city, so it's been very great working with you both. I hope you enjoy your future Tuesday evenings, but if you ever get bored, we usually have a few open seats. We'd love to hear from you. We'd love to hear from you, but please keep your comments to less than four minutes. With that, I will move on to my report. Many of our neighbors had devastating impacts from the weekend's heavy rainfall. Luckily, inside city limits, we really didn't have too significant of impacts. Some downed trees and some ponding water in the roadways, but nothing incredibly overwhelming. We will have Public Works crews out tomorrow on Deckers Creek Trail to address a landslide issue below Forest Avenue. Many of you may have also heard the governor's press conference from early of this month discussing their new agenda for roadway and bridge maintenance. We don't really, we didn't really get a whole lot of information about what that may mean locally, but they have stated that they're going to try to be more data driven in making their decisions on funding. We are all acutely aware of the condition of the roadways here in Montegaly County, so hopefully that'll direct some money towards us. We'll continue to monitor and try to work with them to see how we can ensure that state roads in our community are maintained. Couple of projects I just wanted to give council some updates on. Recreational work at the Fleegal Dam and reservoir continue. The trail contact tractor is on site. There's about one mile of the trail built. The main loop is about three miles. There's no bridges or crossings installed yet. We're working with a contractor to consider an alternative option for Bridge Number One. This recreation area is, remains closed to the public at the moment, but we are hoping to be able to open that to the public by the end of 2025. We're also busy with White Park, the construction of the bridge of the reservoir. A long time coming. We had our first concrete pour last week for the foundations of the southern abutment. The superstructure of the part of the bridge that you'll walk on, we're hoping to have arriving on site in this fall. And then the south side trails, which will do trails on the Greenback Road side, should come shortly thereafter. A few more housekeeping notes. We have our offices, administrative offices will be closed Thursday for West Virginia Day, and then our department heads are prepping for our new city manager, Jamie Miller, to start on Monday. So she'll get a prep with an early Saturday meeting before her first day of work. So looking forward to welcoming her and having her hit the ground running before her first day. So and then that's all I have for today. So unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Yes, I have one pothole.
What's it?
Just one.
Okay.
There's a pothole at the corner of Pocahontas and University Avenue that gets very large and very deep. And University Avenue is State Road. So whatever anyone could do for that one pothole, that'd be really cool. Because I know they were going to fill them all by a certain date, and there do happen to be quite a few that got missed. So maybe other people have potholes and we could accumulate a list.
I believe it was May thirty.
And that's why I'm just bringing up the one pothole because we don't need to do that here. But it would be cool if we accumulated a list so that they could fill their promise.
Thank you. I will note that one pothole, and I, I'm remiss to say I have one more thing to add. We did have an onsite meeting for North Street, and we're going to be working with a contractor to, I believe they said by the end of next week, they're going to pour the rest of the curbs except in the areas where we are waiting for utility poles to move, and then they're going to put a base course down. So hopefully we were waiting for some utility work, but sometimes we don't know how long that's going to take. So we have asked them to move forward with at least the base course to help with the gravel and the rutting. So hopefully by next week, that should be taken care of. Not quite a pothole. It's a dug pothole, but.
Well, so are they, so they're going to have to replace the gravel that washed and then put the base course down?
Yeah.
Before the next rainstorm?
Yeah.
That's going to be tricky.
They're out there about every day trying to keep the gravel where it's supposed to go.
Yeah.
And how about Walnut Street?
I was in a couple vaults today.
So I saw.
Yep.
Any update on timeline for when we can anticipate work beginning again?
Some city staff met with the contractor onsite today, and we have a meeting tomorrow with the DOH and the designer to try to continue to talk through some issues. And hopefully after that meeting, I will have some more information.
Okay.
Do we have a resolution on how to go about, can we give can we give the utility companies an hour notification? Get their lines off the hot poles?
Usually they'll tell us if we pay for it. They're more than happy to let us do their work.
My feeling is if you take it down, they'll know.
When they get a call saying the internet's out, they'll come and rewire it.
Brian, you didn't hear that?
What do you think, Brian? No comment.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to remind folks who may be watching that we, this will be my last report on our police and fire, who will be testing on June twenty eighth, both of them at the same time. So the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding their written and agility exam at nine AM on Saturday, June twenty eighth. Folks are interested in applying. We will take their application up until that day. We are still short about twenty officers. I will share that the Police Civil Service Commission met last week, and they did certify one individual. And we're excited to get her into the State Police Academy and so back into Morgantown and on the road. So congratulations to this individual. The Fire Civil Service Commission, they will be holding your agility exam also on June twenty eighth at nine AM. And that will be at the North Side Fire Station. And folks can still apply to take that test as well. We have links on our website at Morgantown W E dot gov for both the police and the fire. Just navigate to the fire department or the police department, and there is a link there to apply online. And of course, if anyone has any questions, they can always call the courts office. And lastly, to Bill and Dave, this is your last meeting in the chambers, and I just want to say personally and professionally, I want to acknowledge your extraordinary integrity and leadership that you have shown the whole time we've been here. We had a conversation about the both of you and how actually, I just said that you are cool cats. Because you just never waver, and we appreciate that. And as your clerk, I've had the privilege of witnessing your unwavering commitment to doing what's right for the city. And frankly, one isn't easy, so thank you for that. I'm deeply grateful for the example that you've shown and that you, and I'm honored to work alongside you. So I wish you the best.
Thank you, Christine. Yeah, thank you. It's been our pleasure, believe me. Top act of the fall, City Attorney.
I always have all the exciting things. But first, I'd say thank you both to Councilors Kowicki and Harshberger for your service. I've appreciated having the opportunity to work and to, to serve the city with you and look forward to continuing seeing you. Continuing your good work. Just a couple of updates for me. Council passed tonight the state required business licensing and tax updates. Thanks to you all and to the Finance Department, and particularly for all the work on a quick turnaround on those based on the legislative timeline. The Finance Department is set up with the appropriate forms and notices to inform our taxpayers and license holders of those changes. And we will follow up with them on any implementing regulations that may be necessary or just other, other follow up issues as people work through those changes. Council also passed the amendment to TIF District Number Three tonight. That was the final action on what has been a kind of multi-step process. So, so those changes now go into effect. The district has an extended term, a different footprint, and campus neighborhoods revitalization corporation can really go forward with some certainty and plan for more redevelopment in that district. So we'll, we'll work with them to do that. This is not the, the separate Riverfront TIF amendment that is, the city is currently in the process of proposing, which will come before you in July. And then as a follow up to the discussion on the Housing Code updates tonight, I would, I'll check in with our building official and see what kind of specifics they have in mind that would address council questions. And we can get updates to you and work with you all however is best to, to find a, a more clear way of addressing the needs they have. But meanwhile, the ordinance as amended will, will go into effect, and they'll be able to put that in place for the upcoming year. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
We're going to do this, if it's okay with council, in a little different order. If we could start with you, Wheeze, and then if it's okay, we'll skip you, Dave. Butch, and then come back. That's all right.
They get the last word.
Yeah.
Cool.
That way they just take the last word.
I'll keep mine short. Thanks for the update on North Street. That was important. The storms have been causing a lot of problems up there. We had to cancel, our health and wellness group had to commission, had to cancel our Smile Express this past weekend because of broke down. So we, we didn't have enough notice. We tried to get Mon Health, but it was just too short a notice, so. And that's all I have for today.
I don't know exactly how we need to handle this, but I do know that in the neighborhood that I happen to reside, which is a couple of blocks behind Creps Park, there are definitely people with two and four inches of water in their basement and a lot of concerns about the timing of when and how the storm drain system gets cleaned out. And so I don't know how we want to work with MUB on that. But it would be good to just, as we have these large flooding events, it would be good to figure out what we can do to make it better each time because they're, these extensive rain events are not going away. So that was one thing that I wanted to make sure that we thought about. Thanks also to Bill and Dave for your cool service and your thoughtful way of engaging with entities and neighborhoods and the business community and kind of keeping good perspective on how these things could be made better and thinking about the future, because I think that's really important. And I look forward to whatever engagement you all can muster in the future. Because it's nice to have some continuity around here when we can get it. But if you're done here, you can do whatever, whatever you'd aim, hopefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also had some concerns I was sharing with Councilor Harshberger. Some residents in Woodburn had reached out about stormwater issues. So yeah, I think we're all going to be in touch with MUB maybe.
Well, but I mean, maybe we need to coordinate it something.
Yeah, yeah. It's been a long-winded meeting. I'll keep it short. Just a couple of upcoming events. Wednesday, tomorrow afternoon, evening, there is a Main Street and Dream Machines Car Club Cruisin' on High Street. On Thursday, Bow Park is hosting a bluegrass band called Shadow Grass. That concert had to be moved to the old pool location in Marilla Park because according to the director of Bow Park, they've been making a little bit of a splash in the region internationally. And the anticipated crowd was a little larger than.
Was that pun intended?
Splash in the old pools. Yeah. I like that. It wasn't, but yes. Friday, the Summer Concert Series, Chase Matthew and Huey Mack, descendant of Wheeze. And then on Sunday, we are hosting an event at the New Mushroom Trail along Deckers Creek. Delegate Evan Hansen is sponsoring a bounce house. I think we have a food truck or two coming. The library has a book trial that they're installing, as well as they're bringing some yard games. We'll have a few different art activities. Should be a fun time, Sunday from one to three. Oh, and Kevin of Weary Space Wanderer will be playing music for us. So family-friendly, free event. Come down and, and enjoy the new trail.
So yeah, it's been, it's been really hard and rough to see all the flooding that was happening in the state over the weekend, especially Wheeling, where, you know, I guess we're up to seven people dead up there. Been in contact with some people who've been directly impacted. We do have some resources and contact with people. If there's folks who need to help clean out their basement, ask them to get in touch, and we'll send volunteers, volunteers ready to help. That did a lot of that work down in Southern West Virginia and are ready to do it. There are two, we had a couple of people in Fairmont today. It seems like they got hit worse than we did in terms of Northern West Virginia. Everybody saw the apartment building, but I think there's, you know, some other spots. Glad that nobody was hurt in that apartment building collapse. One thing I just wanted to like think about and highlight when we're talking about like stormwater prevention and the things MUB has done is that we asked WBU to be a partner on these stormwater prevention efforts, and they refused. I would hope that they can think about coming back to partnership with these kinds of things happening. We saw what the Alumni Center looked like over the weekend, and it's starting to get much better. So I would just ask, especially with the new president coming in, that maybe we rethink those partnerships. The Pride Block Party was over the weekend. That was the day before the flooding. It, it rained like halfway through, and part of it was definitely welcome because it was hot. I wanted to thank the mayor for coming out there and honoring some, some of our local LGBTQ champions and just attending Pride, so I appreciate you being there. And Danielle, thank you for coming as well. If other people were there, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, but I was just running around the entire time. And I wanted to also like express my appreciation to Jeff. Thank you for coming and taking on that leadership, and it's allowed me to take a step back from leadership. So hopefully next year that we can see it be just as smooth. But I just want to lay the groundwork now, and I don't know, we may have to talk to the mayor about this, but I'd like to shut down High Street to get Pride, at least from like maybe South High down on, on that street rather than in the amphitheater, and then maybe have the amphitheater where we just have concerts all day. So just be thinking about that. We may have some effect on whether or not that gets to go, so.
Ask early.
So that's, yeah, one year out right now.
I think you've done it.
Yeah, maybe we'll be a little later in June, so we've got a little bit more than a year, you know. a year, you know. But anyway, the last thing I want to say is I've, I've really appreciated being able to sit on this council for four years with you, Bill, with you, Dave. Bill, you are, you have always been the grumpy naysayer. And believe it or not, that's appreciated. And I think that having a perspective that wants to challenge, you know, everybody else's perspective is actually super valuable. And so I've appreciated that about you. I've also appreciated your kindness. And I'll always remember us touring City Hall to kind of together, the first time it was open. And that was fun. It was like touring with my uncle or something. And Dave, I've always appreciated your compassion and your empathy. I get to sit next to you. So, you know, like, I think that you have a real heart for, for just other human beings in general. And it's been really great to see that over the years and like just, you genuinely care about other people and like want to bring like a, well, it's the opposite of Bill, bring softness to the role and a softness to your fellow councilors. And you have like, a great mediating factor. I think that's why you're great for MUB, especially during that contentious time. You're like the perfect person to put on there. So I just wanted to mark that for everybody. And I've, I've really appreciated serving with you guys and having that privilege. So, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
If it's okay, I'll go and then I'll let you two-
Sure.
-get the last words in, if that's all right. We had our neighborhood guard sale on Saturday. And it was supposed to be storming, so the attendance wasn't what it was hoped to be.
They're all at Pride.
Well, Pride started at 12. Our yard sale is pretty much over by then. So I got to do the yard sale in the morning and then I went to Pride in the afternoon. And I think it was my third year in a row because it popped up on my news feed. So you guys always do such a great job, such a fantastic job. Jeff, it was really nice meeting you for the first time. And I appreciate you all letting me be a part of that and participating. Our neighborhood association meeting is going to be on Monday at Jack Roberts Park at 6:00 PM. And you can check out my Facebook as a reminder in the event that it changes. And then lastly, I would like to say thank you to Dave and Bill. Dave, you were always so calm and reserved and thoughtful, to the point where I thought you'd been here for years and you'd just seen it all when I first started. And I was like, oh, obviously, Dave's been here a while. I had no idea. Because you were just very present in every conversation. And I always appreciated that calm understanding where you were just so reasonable. And I always wanted to hear what everybody had to say in the approach that you took. And Bill, the first time I sat down next to you, I think you just got your computer because you started hitting the keys really hard and I got nervous. Didn't know the kind of person I was sitting next to, just either way. Shortly thereafter, I think you went on a trip to Egypt.
Wow.
And that was when I first got to really know Bill Kueke, the person from TV. And I got to know that, all the different layers and everything about you. And I've appreciated the time getting to sit next to you and learn from you. And your experience on council over the years. And I genuinely have appreciated that, your friendship from both of you and your kindness. So with that said, who would like to go first then?
I'll go first and leave the senior member retiring the council.
The grumpy guy.
And I think it's appropriate, we both wore city shirts for the last official meeting.
They must have called each other and arranged it.
Yeah, it has been an honor to serve our city as a city council representing Sixth Ward. And it's been a real privilege to work with, with you all. The amount of time we spend together in these meetings and, you know, sub-meetings, et cetera. I was just doing the math, thinking how long, how many hours it takes to earn a college degree. And we knocked that out easy in a year. And so six years in, I've earned like six college degrees. But it's been a real pleasure and I'm going to, I'm going to miss the camaraderie that we've shared. And I think, you know, I was thinking back to when I first started, which was I ran in 2019. It was because of conversations with Jenny in the winter of 2019, asking me if I would consider potentially running that spring. And I had never thought about it. And she appealed to my sense of community service. And eventually I thought, you know, I really should. I should step up and at least offer. And I did. And I'm glad I did. So thank you, Jenny. And, and I'd like to thank our assistant city manager and everybody really at the administration level for their responsiveness to issues. Because, you know, we have a huge slide on below Forest Avenue on the rail trail. And, you know, I just learned and thank you from Ella that the city's going to help clean that up and restore that section of trail tomorrow. And so it's that kind of responsiveness that just has been a pleasure to work with in my time on council and even before, just representing the Monreal River Trail Conservancy. And I hope, you know, able to, to have that relationship continuing moving forward. And Christine, thank you for everything. You're the glue that keeps us all together. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Wow. Okay. Now I forgot one thing that we'll mention, should mention. There's a tour, history tour of the Senate, you got one. Senator Waitman T. Willie's house this Friday. That you can, if you get in early and don't pay at the door, you save some money. And you also support our history museum. So by all means, if you have the time and the interest, I can do go there. Also too, unfortunately, the Morgantown Historic Landmarks Commission missed getting its agenda in on time. So we're not going to have a meeting this month. We're not required to meet every month, but we do try to meet frequently. So they will meet next month, next, I believe it's July 16. And let me address this. Tonight was unexpected. And let's appreciate it, at least I know for both of us. On this council, you know, having been through numbers of them, you guys are among the best. And I really do appreciate the work that you've done and your dedication. You really, you've really done a yeoman's job. You really stepped up and I think contributed. I hope that continues. I hope your enthusiasm and your energies maintain. And as to administration, Morgantown's always had a pretty good administration. But you guys have improved. I mean, really improved. You've added where you needed to. You provided services that weren't there before. I think tonight's a wonderful testimony to the kinds of initiatives that were taken with our citizens academies. And I know that you were an advocate of that, if not the originator in terms of bringing it to the city. That's just remarkable. I mean, it's remarkable what we've done in terms of the way we've been able to pursue grants. So what did I hear tonight? Eighty percent of the grants that we went after, we got. That was a position that didn't exist. Our, our communications department, that was the department, I think, that perhaps had one person who was taking care of the Facebook account way back when. And how they are truthfully capable of doing the communications that the city deserves and actually keeping the community informed. Our legal staff, you've done all right.
Thank you, Bill.
You've done more than all right. You kept us on the straight now. I really do appreciate it. So I, it's been an honor to be here, honestly. It's been my pleasure to serve. And for those out there who have never considered this or had to be sort of guilted into it.
Guilted?
That's a legitimate tactic with all of us more than once used it. But it's been a, it's been a wonderful ride. I'll miss it. I really will. But I wish you all the best. And thank you. And Susan, you were truthfully unexpected. And you sat through the entire damn meeting. However, I'm sure you've been through numbers of these. So thank you for coming and just sharing. So much appreciated. That's it.
Oh, move to adjourn.
Pursuit of West Virginia State Code Section 9-6/9, 8-412, to discuss potential repentant litigation and matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
Second.
There we go.